We're 28, 2013 Board of Commissioners meeting to order. All please rise for the notification delivered by Reverend Derek Catherine from Cornerstone Azerine Church. Thank you Reverend for being here with us today.
Thank you. Let's pray. Thank you God for the beauty and the blessings of this day. We take nothing for granted, just give you thanks and praise. And I ask tonight Father that you would endow these leaders with wisdom and insight, discernment and guidance, God, to bless this great city, these wonderful people. That your will is done in each individual life and even in the life of this city. We love you today. In the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much Reverend. And also pleased you remain standing for the Fledge of Allegiance to be delivered by or led by Commissioner Tommy Haines.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. You may be seated. I was right on that.
I did last time. It was okay.
Thank you.
He's a quick learner.
I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Roach?
Here.
Mr. Haines?
Here.
Mr. Bowers?
Here.
Mayor Mack?
Here. We do have a corner. And also the amendments from September 9th work session, September 23rd regular meeting, September 30th special, September 30th special at 5:00. We'll entertain any...
Mayor, I may if we adopt the amendments as presented.
Moved by Commissioner Bowers.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Roach. Any discussion, CNN, court, please call roll.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haines?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mayor Mack?
Yes, the amendments are approved. Let's see, we don't have, making sure we didn't have any ceremonial items there. We would like to say this time, thanks to our wonderful staff person, Andy, Andrew Ferris, for all the work he's done on the lighting and getting the room painted. And our Public Works Department, which takes care of the building maintenance, Tom Bradley and Derek Gray and all the wonderful folks back in that division. And all the, our employees here in City Hall for your patience during this time when this was all torn up and it just looks so much better and we appreciate that. And working with Cable 10 folks on their continued support of broadcasting the meetings. I don't think we have any other ceremonial items. We'll have some retirements that'll be on there for next month, I believe. And I think we will, we will act on a couple of retirements tonight, I believe. And that would be with Randy Charles, a longtime officer in the Frankfurt Police Department. And he's done a wonderful job and had a wonderful career there. And he's moving on with his life and we wish him well in his future endeavors and thank him for his past service. Next item is citizen comments. And this is the time on the agenda that we allow people from the community to discuss issues, address issues, ask questions. A lot of the things that we can do, we can do in service orders for folks, but sometimes folks feel like they need to come and address the commission. So if anyone would like to, please raise your hand, just come forward. And we allow five minutes to just state your name for the record. You don't have to put your address in, just your name is good and what the issue is. And then the city attorney will keep the time. And if you don't mind, just try to keep an eye, we don't like to interrupt, but we try to remind you when it get to the five minute mark, I'll give some kind of signal.
I'll try to keep it short.
Thank you.
I'm Scott Walters. I live downtown. I do want to thank the commission and the mayor for the new sidewalks that we're getting and the bump out. I think it's going to help economically and I think it's going to help in terms of pedestrian safety. The one thing I did want to talk about, and I think it may be something that's on your own's agenda and has been a lot of emails going around, but that, the crosswalk and intersection at Wapping and St. Clair, I think that it's one of those things that cars will use as much space as they're given to make that corner. And the wider the space, the faster they go. And I think a few of us got together and sort of did a little diagram, and I think you might have saw those. If we could get something close to that, I think it would help both in calming the traffic and helping people get across there. I wanted to point out my daughter, she's still got about six years at Second Street School, and that's her, that is one of the things that she crosses twice a day, every day. And I was proud of her the other day. She did a little thing, they had a little worksheet that they had to do. And it was wants are needs. And you know, of course, food and water was a need. And then they went down and broke down candy and toys, those were wants. And then it came to a car and transportation. And she put it down as a want because she didn't need one. Everything that she has is in the downtown, whether it be the History Center and going over there, the library, her pottery studio, her school, everything's in that walking realm. And I think that that's something that, walking is one of the most environmental things that we can do, not having to get in and start a car. And the more we can promote that, the more we can do the small things, like address this pedestrian crossing, I think the bigger benefit it is. So thank you all for your time. Hopefully I didn't take too much.
Thank you so much for doing that. And thank you for bringing your daughter and friends. Go ahead.
I live downtown too, and we walk back and forth to Second Street. I've got a three-year-old, so we've got about 10 more years to do the walk back and forth. I'm going to agree with everything, second of everything that Scott said, but I'm also wanting to talk to you about that same intersection from the standpoint of a property owner on Second Street and the retail district that we, by investing and rehabbing buildings, are helping to build on Second Street. That, the singing bridge is, we've got two bridges. One is the Capitol Avenue Bridge, which if you're a pedestrian walking over it, it's not the funnest bridge to cross. You're right there, there's nothing between you and then the cars dipping over. And there's not much of a way to cross the street once you get, once you're on the bridge. It's hard to get across any street that the bridge ends at. So I would say that the singing bridge is the preferred means of crossing the river from a pedestrian standpoint. But that said, you know, there's only one side that you can really cross on if you want to go from Second Street to downtown. Opening up this, or building out the sidewalk extension at the corner of Wapping and St. Clair on the federal building side would really help in the safety for pedestrians. We're working on Second Street toward a day when people will want to come, park either downtown or on Second Street and walk back and forth. Maybe they stop and eat at Rick's along the way and then they go get their, you know, art, something from the gallery and then they come downtown. And maybe they even stay as long as to have dinner downtown. So walking back and forth is something that would really bring the connectivity from the Second Street corridor over to the downtown area. And that intersection, as it stands, is very difficult to cross from a pedestrian standpoint. I would really encourage you to consider expanding that sidewalk, to consider the, put the pedestrian as a priority and the car as a want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I say anything, Mayor?
Sure, go ahead.
And just from a standpoint that when there was work being done on the singing bridge, I think it was two years ago, that you can't, we couldn't decrease the curb on Capitol Avenue either. So the only ADA accessible bridge for leaving downtown is the singing bridge. And I just want to make that point. And then when that bridge was closed down, there was also a sign, "If you have to cross the bridge, call us and we'll find you a way to get over the bridge." Because there's no other safe route as an ADA compliant.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you all so much. I know we've got, I don't know if I've seen the latest email version, but I think the commission all got copies today of some emails with diagrams on there. And I'm not sure if the staff has any, anything additional to add on that. Do you all want to address it now or...
I could just briefly say that staff is well aware, the commission is well aware. We are looking at options. We're trying to do some research to determine whether or not, there's a purpose for the way the intersection is constructed at this time. There's a bit of a concern that should we change it, that it may have to be changed back because something we're missing. So we're checking several resources to determine if we can find out what the purpose is. But I think there's a willingness and an openness on the part of the staff at least to make some changes and hopefully compromise with what's out there today and make it a safer intersection. That's our goal as well.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Can we just add on to that? That Wapping Street, I guess per the emails as well, is to get worked on in the next couple of weeks?
Three to four.
Three to four weeks, so which gives us that much more time when we get to that street. Hopefully we'll have an answer what to do with that sidewalk.
Okay.
Just for clarification.
Any other commissioners? Okay, I'm sure we'll get information from our staff on all that. And we appreciate you all being here and bringing your young ones to come and participate. You all did great. Do you all want to say anything, girls? Do you all want to say anything? Don't mean to put you on the spot. Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to make you feel nervous. I was just asking. You don't have to. All right, well, thank you all so much. Next item then is, we'll move on into ordinance. We have a first reading, item 4.1. So I will ask, this is under which department, Sewer Department? Do we need to discuss anything on it or will we answer all the questions in the work session? And if not, would it be asked to be read for its first, if it's first reading by title and summary only?
By title, an ordinance amending Frankfurt Code of Ordinances, Chapter 52, Section 52.04, Paragraph A, 1, charges. Summary, this ordinance defers the scheduled January 1, 2014 rate increase to January 1, 2015, and deletes the minimum charge for the increase due to the Consumer Price Index.
Thank you so much. Next item is 4.2. It's also a first reading on an ordinance that also changes job title and doesn't change the budget, but it's also in sewer. So if there's no questions on that, I'll ask the solicitor to read it by title and summary only.
Title, an ordinance amending Section 37.31 Pay Plan, Classification and Compensation of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances. Summary, this ordinance amends Section 37.31 of the Code of Ordinances to change the name of the position of Wet Weather Coordinator Engineer to Water Quality Engineer.
And our next item is 4.3. It's also a first reading. This changes, makes some change to Property Maintenance Code, which we discussed previously. And if there's no questions on that, we'll also ask it gets its first reading by title and summary only.
By title, an ordinance regulating nuisances within the City of Frankfurt and amending Sections 150.05, 36.15, 36.16, 36.17, 36.18, 36.19, 36.020, 36.021, 36.22, 36.23, 36.24, 36.25, and 36.26 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances, Property Maintenance Code. Summary, this ordinance, which amends Section 150.05, 36.15, 36.16, 36.17, 36.18, 36.19, 36.20, 36.21, 36.22, 36.23, 36.24, 36.25, and 36.26 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances and which takes effect on January 1, 2014, provides for the enactment of a nuisance code and the creations of a nuisance code hearing board. Effective January 1, 2014, the nuisance code shall take the place of the Property Maintenance Code, except for violations that were cited on or before December 31, 2013.
Thank you so much. The next item would be orders, which we have none, next resolutions, which we have none, next item would be consent calendar items. So I think we want to, there was a request to take 7.1, remove 7.1 at this time. If there's no objection, we will pass over 7.1 and put it on at a future meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Item 7.2 is to apply for Kentucky League of Cities matching grant for up to $3,000 for public works, safety cones, and barrels. There is a $3,000 matching amount on the city's part. Item 7.3 is not to exceed $14,000 grant application to the Eastern Foundation for archery equipment at Cove Spring Park. There is no match required. Item 7.4 is a request for $8,755.22. This is an allocation from the area development funds through the Bluegrass Area Development District to be used jointly for Franklin, with Franklin County for the senior center HVAC system. Item 7.5 is a $4,392 change order number one with Randall Davies for construction of a boat ramp. The change order covers an additional 72 tons of channel lining at a cost of $61 per ton. The revised contract amount is $129,333. Excuse me. Item 7.6 is a $27,531.75 payment to Mission Communications for annual telemetering, which uses the city's cell phones and is required by the state to monitor the city's sanitary sewer pump stations. The contract will run through August 2014. Item 7.7 is an $85,000 amendment number two to the engineering agreement with GRW for Construction Administration Construction Observation for Country Lane Sanitary Improvement Project. The revised contract amount is $207,025.40. Item 7.8 is a $12,489 demolition contract with John Faissault Jr. to move a building at 319 Holm Street per the Property Maintenance Code. Item 7.9 is a $23,466.76 change order number four for the Myrtle Avenue Sewer Rehabilitation Project to balance actual quantities, including 100 additional feet of ductile iron pipe. The revised contract amount is $924,835.66. Item 7.10 is personnel. First is a retirement of Randall Charles as Police Patrol Officer 3 that is effective October 31, 2013. Appointment of Reader Woolridge, Office Assistant in the Police Department, effective October 29, 2013. Appointment of Adam Lanning in the Sewer Department as a Deputy Director of Operations, effective November 12, 2013. And in addition, this is a transfer and voluntary demotion by Robert Weber in the Street Department, transferring to the Sewer Department as a Plant Operator 1, effective November 5. And then finally, permission to make three conditional offers of employment for the position of Patrol Officer, conditional and contingent upon successful completion of background, medical, psychological, polygraph, and drug screen examinations by each candidate.
We've heard the consent items. Is there a motion on the consent?
To make a motion to approve, Mayor?
Moved by Commissioner Haddon.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Haines. All those who signify on their presence tonight will be considered to have voted the affirmative on the consent items unless they file vote modification points with the city clerk. None have been filed, so all the consent items are adopted. Thank you so much. Board appointments, I have some, but I didn't, I wanted to put them all together. And I know Ramona, I'm sorry, city clerk, got a confirmation from one of the folks today. We'll put all, try to get them all to you in November. That would be Ethics Commission, who was that, ARB?
ARB.
ARB. And all of the names for the Human Rights Commission. I think that's good, and it will be up to date.
I think so too.
Okay. That sounds...
And with that nuisance board, is it going to be the same board that's...
I was thinking that's what the commission preferred, right? Is that what, if I kept, keep it, just make the, keep it the same? If that's okay, unless you'll have other thoughts?
We'll keep it the same.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you. And old business you all asked me about, I don't know if we want to talk about tonight, but the streetlights. And we got the, one of the informational sheets that I think the city manager sent that to everybody. Commissioner Bowers, go ahead.
Are we going to take up streetlights here?
I don't know. I just was saying if you want.
If we are, I'd like to take up something a little bit more quickly than that. That might take some time.
And I didn't know if we were going to, if we were going to vote on it, we're just trying to give a consensus.
We need direction.
Let me defer to you, Commissioner, and I will confer to you.
Well, no, I guess we're on streetlights now, but I had a piece of old business just for clarification.
That's okay, go ahead.
It might not take too long.
Do yours first.
I think mine will be real brief. I emailed Mr. Zizov today and then read a later email that he answered my, he didn't answer my question, but he clarified a bit. But there was supposed to have been a meeting today between the Parks Departments of the city and the county. And what caught my eye in the manager's report of the 18th of this month really raised my eyebrows and punctuated with an exclamation point. It says, "A meeting with city and county representatives is scheduled for October 18th at Lakeview Park to discuss a combined city-county Parks Department." And that is not what this commission directed. We can, I'm not about executively or administratively merging the Parks Department. I think that Commissioner Haddon brought that up as a recommendation that the two departments sit down and talk about how they might work more effectively together. But I'm afraid if people read this out in public land, it will look like we're trying to administratively merge that department. And I for one am not willing to do that. And I don't think that was the intent of that recommendation. It was not the intent. So I just want to clarify that for the public. We're not looking at merging departments. So I wanted to just make that point.
Okay, thank you. Did, we didn't have an update on that, did we?
And that meeting has been rescheduled for the 4th of November, correct?
Okay. Great. All right, thank you, Commissioner Bowers. And I said, did anybody else have any other old business? When I do.
No, mine's mine.
Okay. But just the thing, we had, I guess, look at lighting.
Commissioner Haddon has...
Go ahead, Commissioner Haines, please.
Well, I just wanted to talk about our meeting schedule for next month.
Okay.
And if you guys want to wait till after everything else, but I think that needs to be discussed.
Go ahead.
That since the 11th is a holiday, that we are meeting, I'm just doing this for clarification for all of us.
Mm-hmm.
Our meeting then will be on the 4th, correct? At 3:30?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor.
And that is to discuss the audit report and goals and priorities? Correct?
Correct.
Yes, and it's also the work session.
Commissioner.
A few other items?
I would like to double check with Mr. Dawson. Will we November 4 for the audit or November 18?
18.
Okay.
Okay.
So November 18th would be for the audit. November 18th is for the audit? Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that's at 5:00?
Commissioner Haddon?
Yes.
November 18th is, I had down something real close to what you just said, but I had down that we're doing the bond thing on the 18th.
Okay.
Aren't we doing city manager's evaluation on the 18th?
Okay.
And then on the 4th, I had down goals and budget. And then whatever other work session items that we come up with between now and then, trying to keep them to a minimum, as I remember, because we were doing the goal.
And we'll have, we could go ahead and ask our staff, folks to go ahead and send us a, if you want, put out a memo to all of the other department heads and any appropriate folks that get our meeting notifications. We could go ahead and compile that and send it out.
It's due out to the commission Wednesday anyway. That will be the regular work session on the 4th. Correct? With those items, those discussion items as listed tonight.
Okay. And we'll, those will be sent to the proper...
Yes.
Media outlets.
Yes.
So if they choose that they want to run that schedule, which I think most of them will.
And we'll still have the voting meeting, I'm sorry, on November 25th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, correct.
Just clarifying.
Good idea.
And as well, we had also discussed at our last work session, Troy Hearn had gotten in touch with us and we have moved him to December, correct? To the work session meeting in December?
Is that correct?
For his presentation.
If that's the preference.
Correct? All right. Has he been notified, Mayor?
I talked to him Friday, but I don't know that the staff has said anything in terms of confirmations. Is that correct?
That's correct. Would you like me to contact him?
Please, just to confirm and make sure that that date is okay with him?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other, any other old business?
I guess we're getting ready to talk about lights.
Lights, camera, action.
I was going to say, the only thing was, we started because of wanting consistency. And I think the commission said, directed our staff to look at ways to make the lighting consistent. We have, how many blocks of Main Street? Six blocks of Main Street. And right now only one block has, or one block has five globe lamps. The others have Cobra Heads. And then there's two blocks of St. Clair. And one block has Cobra Heads, one block has five globes. And I guess just trying to figure out if, I think there was more of a thinking from what I can tell, like instead of replacing what's already there now because of the cost that we go back and replace those other lamps if we're going to do that at a later date as money becomes available. And then go ahead and start with the St. Clair block between Wapping and Main, because that's where the courthouse is, or the judicial center. And that, whatever we put there, then we would put the rest on, we'd go back on, we do Main Street, which would, right now doesn't have any, it has the Cobra Heads. And I guess there's no requirement that we have to do any of those. But when the city manager and I went downtown, when, I don't know, when was that, September?
Might have been very first part of October, too.
Okay. And we asked some of the folks on the street and it was, it was a very informal poll, obviously. And then I've talked with some folks in tourism and chamber and some of the, some of the folks that own businesses downtown, some people that don't own businesses that just go down. I think consistency is probably a key. And I don't want to put Joy on the spot, but Joy Jeffrey, I'm sorry, Ms. Jeffrey's...
She's on the spot now.
Well, no, because she had a story that I thought was interesting about her daughter. Do you mind, is that wrong for me to, do you feel, just about the thing, well, you said you went to your daughter's...
In the middle of this, I just happened to be in Florida, my daughter's, and she was just moving from the suburbs down to Hollywood Beach, where they've just totally redone the historic district there in Hollywood Beach. And the one thing I noticed was the consistency of wayfinding signs and the lights. And it was an unbelievable difference that it did make to the downtown area. I don't personally have an opinion, but when the mayor asked me about this, heritage tourism is on edge.
Over half a million people come here, and I would guess most of them come for historical travel, although Buffalo Trace is now at 89,000, so they're certainly holding their own. And part of that's heritage travel also. Commissioner Haines and I did take a drive downtown after the mayor talked to Carmen and me. And there is a tremendous hodgepodge. I know you can't afford to do everything right now, and I don't think any of us are suggesting that you should. But just a couple of issues that came up. One of them was that if lights had to be replaced, that the lights on the St. Clair Mall could have to have reimbursement because they were dollars that came from grants. have to have reimbursement because they were dollars that came from grant dollars. And I had actually, and I haven't had a chance to tell you this, Mayor, I talked to Rebecca when I got here, and there is no money that's tied to the Main Street programs, however, Rebecca told me that that money came from actually transportation enhancement dollars. So I don't have, I don't, I don't know how that would work, I have absolutely no idea. But I guess the only thing that I would say is, if you put the three globe lights, you've now interested, interjected yet one more light downtown. So I don't know, I'm, I'm not going to be mad at you, no matter what you do, because I consider myself working for you instead of not against you. But I would prefer that we did something eventually that would bring consistency. And as Tommy, excuse me, Commissioner Haynes and I, went downtown, everything is the same all along Broadway, on the old State Capitol lawn, down in front of the Kentucky Historical Society, and even the same kind of light is used on the boulevard going from Second Street and Capitol Avenue clear up to where you get to the State Capitol. So there must be some historical logical thinking in that particular light. So now that I have totally confused you.
Oh, yeah.
I will sit down and let you decide.
And I mean, I just thought that the story you told me about when you noticed going to Hollywood.
Oh, it was, it was very stark, when you went into that area, they had, of course, we've seen this actually in Lexington, when they were getting ready, I mean, and they'd done the signage there, anytime you've got some consistency, it brings order to something, it brings, like you've thought about it, as opposed to what they say, little orphan nanny just growed up. It looks like you've really done something that you've thought about doing. And I think, kind of like what you were saying, Mr. Zizov, about thinking about what to do at that corner, I think it's a good idea to think about it. However, having said that, I realize there's pressure because the courthouse is about to be done, but I would not think it was very logical to go ahead and bring yet one more different light to downtown than we've already got, because we've already got a bunch.
And I didn't mean to, I just wanted to ask about the Hollywood.
Yeah.
Did you want to ask, did you want to ask, do you want to answer questions? Okay, I was gonna say, what I was going to say was, the Old Capitol grounds has the colonial style on it, which is on a state property, Historical Society, then the History Center has the acorn style, we call it acorn style because it's, do you all know which one that one is? So one of those two that are already there is just what I was thinking, and then I guess you do have the view if you come off the bridge, if you're going to look down at the Old Capitol grounds, they're going to have the, I'll just call them colonial style, I don't know if that's the proper, that's just what we're saying, so. One of those two, I mean, either of those two are, I mean, I'm equally twinned on one of the, either one of those two, but whatever pole we put them on, they should probably be higher than what we're currently have on Main Street and St. Clair now, because they're a little bit, they glare a little bit, if you, if you notice that when you drive, they might need to be taller height, we'll leave that up to our public works, our traffic engineers as to what the proper height would be, but those would be, I think, in terms of consistency, one of those two. But whatever the rest of the group feels like, I don't know how you feel, so.
Well, Mayor, I think we need to definitely think about not
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Not next week, but years down the road, when we're able to go and, and bring more uniformity to the downtown, so I think we need to think long-term on this.
Now, it's a talent.
What's going to be, there's not going to be a quick way, but what's going to be the quickest way to bring that uniformity across the years is what I think we need to do, because I'm kind of echoing you, Ms. Jeffries, although it doesn't sound like it, I sound like I'm confusing people, too, but eventually I want us to be consistent from street to street, and.
The, Commissioner Roach?
I think, I think the critical thing we've been dealing with is time, and, and, and to be perfectly honest, we have, we have, should have moved quicker than we have, and we've sought to move quicker, and we have not. So now we're at a point in time where I think we've got to make a decision and give, give direction. The, I'm not an expert on lights, and, and I, and I echo what everybody said about uniformity, but I want us to go ahead and get something and move on, figuring that it needs to get done. DFI recommends that we use three bulb or five bulb with smaller bulbs, so that it's not a problem with spacing. I would, I would just, and I, like I said, I'm not an expert at it, but we have those coming, you know, in a certain portion of the downtown, we have those, I think, don't they extend down St. Clair? And so this would continue that theme of the same type of light and go along with what they did with the streetscape, et cetera, with what it, what 1920s, 1930s theme, so that would continue that theme. I suggest we go ahead and do that and save the debate for what uniform light to choose till later, because I don't, I think you're either going to choose something of that era, or you're going to choose something older, such as what you're talking about, Mayor. But I would bow to them since they made that recommendation.
Commissioner.
I would just suggest that, I don't think we're going to make the state change later to fit or to be consistent with what we choose, I think we're more likely to be successful in creating that uniformity if we are consistent with what they have already chosen, I think would be the safer way to go. I don't think we can tell the state, we want you to put your globes down there on the Old Capitol lawn to match ours, I think that, that's a bit more unrealistic, but, I, I think now we're at a point where we can actually do something to bring some consistency to, rather than wait for someone else to do that, for some other entity, that being the state. It's just one thought, second thought.
Commissioner Haynes?
Okay, it actually, the last meeting we had, the lights brought up, to tell you the truth, I was more leaning toward this three bulb thing because it was going to match the five bulbs until I actually started riding around and looking, and most of the five bulb ones, one light is out at least. And I said that, that, okay, that's automatically not being uniform, because we don't have the lights at home. And then I further went with Ms. Jeffries, I was really amazed that all the ones have the one globe up top, and I said, it might be more feasible to get something like that that is uniform. I really, at the time, didn't come here tonight prepared to vote, because I didn't know that was going to be one of them, but if I had to, I'd probably lean more toward that one, I did read DFI's email, and of course, I agree with everything they said, except for the bulbs, if we go to three bulb one, we are talking about another different light. And now we've come to three bulbs, five bulbs, two bulbs, if you count the states going up to the Capitol and the one bulb, and I just think, you know, it's not only moving us farther away from uniformity, it's just creating another class.
So are you, you don't like the three and the five bulb, is what you're saying?
You want the one bulb?
Commissioner.
And I'm basically in agreement with that, I guess, because I think that's going to be the quickest way in the long run to bring it all together. It's not going to all be together right now, but it's the quickest way to do that.
Commissioner Hadden, did you have a, did you?
I would just ask Commissioner Haynes for clarification regarding the one bulb versus three or five, with him saying the one? With that being similar to what would be on Broadway at this point in time, is that what you're speaking of?
That is correct, is that the one with Old Capitol?
There's two, there's the broad, there's the Old Capitol, and then there's the ones on Broadway down by the History Center that are the acorn style, we just had, they look a little bit different. So I don't mean to confuse you, the ones on the Old Capitol grounds, and then there's the ones in front of the History Center. But you, so when you say Broadway, I want to clarify with you.
Well, I don't want to confuse anyone.
Can't imagine.
But I wanted to be the ones that, closest that you can see, you know, you have the Old Capitol there, and there was two nice ones right there.
Yes, those are colonial.
But not the ones when I go down by the History Center, that's different.
That's what, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, those are different.
Those are, those are acorns.
Right.
So do y'all, if you're wanting the, who's on first, if you're wanting the single lamp colonial look, that was not what was chosen by, by the
Streetscape.
Streetscape. I mean, they chose a different period, so if we're, let me just, I'm not an expert in aesthetics, but if we're moving toward a colonial look, are we going to want to make additional changes in all the different things that we've done down there to make it look more colonial? Or do we just not care, and we're just going to put colonial, which?
I wasn't wanting to make it colonial.
Well, then why, why would we want a colonial light?
Well.
It's just a style.
Okay.
That's, my thing was that was what's already there on the history, or the Historical Society's property.
You just want the light.
When we asked people on the street, city manager was there, we just asked people, I think everybody said that we asked the ones on the Old Capitol grounds, not to put you on the spot, I mean, that was, so that, where else do we have those, they have them down by the library.
Can, can, and then I'll get off of this, can I ask a couple, the staff a couple of questions, if that's all right, Mayor?
Of course.
Tom, what do you think?
He just wants direction.
You just want direction?
I do, but I would like to, if we get too tall of a pole, it may affect, in certain areas, it may affect the second story.
Okay.
So that's one thing that, just in the discussion, we want to take into consideration. If you live on the second floor, and you had this acorn outside, sure, it may be, they may be in here, you know, having a question, too, that's just something to consider.
Okay. We'll keep the post.
Rebecca, what do you think?
I don't have an opinion on the lights, but I will say, the, the lights on St. Clair and I believe on Main were purchased with transportation enhancement funding, and I've talked to Mike Jones, who's in charge of that program, and they could, if we do switch those out, they could ask for them back, will they? I, I don't know. But one, one way we can ensure that they don't is if we get the Heritage Council's blessing on whatever we choose. It doesn't have to be the five globe, it could be whatever we can prove was there, whether it was colonial or whatever, but, and they don't really, not that they don't care, but they don't have a dog in the fight as far as in front of the Judicial Center, because we're not using federal funds to do that. But if at some point you want them to be consistent, that means you will have to remove the five globes, so if it was me, I would get their blessing sooner than later, just, that's my opinion, but I don't care which ones you choose, but I just want you all to be informed.
And the Judicial Center, they will go, they will go with what we select, that's correct, okay.
That's what they told me?
We ought to get that in writing as well.
I think we have that. Maybe not, but, okay, so, do y'all want to direct, ask the staff to see how quickly they can get?
To get blessing, yes.
To get that, taken care of, and see if we would have to do any payback, and if, Mike Jones is with, with, is, is Mike Jones with US DOT?
He's with the state.
State DOT? Oh, well, we can take, yeah.
I have one other question, Tom, because one of the things I've mentioned, timing is a problem, I see that we have several other meetings coming up, and I don't mind this being on, those if we need to give you more direction, because get their blessings, but then we need to move out, you know, so we can, you know, move on to the others.
Can I clarify exactly whose blessing I'm getting?
Well, I've heard two different ones, somebody said, somebody
Heritage Council.
Heritage Council.
And why am I asking, I've heard several different lights?
If we select a different light than what was approved
Well, the next is paid.
Back in the early 2000s, will we have to pay back that grant, the money that was?
Changing the five bulbs or something like that?
Yes.
I think that's a little open-ended.
How about if we just, how about we call KYTC, talk to Secretary Hancock in Transportation, and ask him, say, would you make us pay, are you going to make us pay that back?
Why are we changing the five globes, don't we just need eight lights on that one corner, on that one side of the street, we'll just deal with that later?
That's what I was, I was just going with the one street, I wouldn't deal with the five.
We're not, we're not, now, we're not removing anything.
No, 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 no.
I was just asking about timeframe.
I think you're right, Commissioner Hadden, we could just go on and do it and move, and then if we're going to change something, and in the meantime, we've talked with
It takes about six weeks.
I mean, it's also the only brick street downtown, so, I mean, aesthetically, you could say that it could have five globes with the brick street, that
Or the colonial with the, which was brick, too.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bradley, for cutting you off.
Because they're all, they're all brick.
It takes about six weeks on the, on the two styles that we've looked at, and so right now that puts us, if we ordered them today, the middle of December, which is about the target date, assuming the plant board will jump on it and put them in quickly, that puts us about the opening day to the courthouse. If we wait, wait much longer, then we're after that, I don't know that that has to happen in that manner.
Let's just go on, how many, do, you said the Old Capitol ones on Broadway, and Commissioner Bowers, you said the same, or did you not? I don't want to put words in your mouth.
I think I would prefer that.
Okay, and I'm, I'm for that, so there's three, Commissioner Hadden and Commissioner Roach, do you want to chime in?
We've got three.
That's three, let's move on.
Let's move on. Thank you all, and
Of course, you've not gotten blessed in the heritage group, don't we have to get that?
Can you, can you get with us sometime and point out the exact one that you're talking about, so that we don't make a mistake?
We don't, and city manager, he knows, because he was there, he was down, okay. All right, and then we'll ask KYTC about the future of the others, and if they would really make it, then we can also talk to others, okay. New business, I believe, Commissioner, some commissioners, they had some new business, Commissioner Hadden?
Yes. I know we all received an email, but if Chief will, I just want to make sure that we can let out to the public when, what time trick-or-treating is
I just realized.
On Thursday.
Thursday, 10.1.
Six to eight, all right.
On the website, it's on our Facebook page.
Great.
And yesterday, State Bureau, it's not already in bottom of the first line.
What did you say, it's not who?
Thank you, Chief.
Did you have any further, Commissioner?
No, that's it, thank you.
And I didn't realize I had a sec, I didn't, my page is stuck, there's another, there's actually items under new business, but I'll just let Commissioner
Oh, sorry.
I know, I, it was my fault, my page stuck.
If we have one, you want to just wait till you're done with that, that's fine?
It's fine, we'll do it, 10.1 is to authorize the signing, an agreement with University of Kentucky Transportation Center to provide basic work zone, traffic control, flagger training for the sewer department, any questions on that? It would be, the budget amount is, I lost my place, place. $185 per individual, and the center will come on site and train all members of the department at a cost of $1,800, which would save us about $1,000 in direct training costs for travel and overtime associated with sending these individuals to Lexington. So, anything else need to be added, or is that? Any questions? If not, we need approval.
I move approve.
Move back, Commissioner Bowers? Second, second, back Commissioner Haynes, any further discussions, you know, quick please go. Sorry, so go ahead, Commissioner Hadden has a question.
The only thing I would, I would ask is if, if we're going to be doing this training, would anyone maybe, would the, would it make sense to team up with the plant board and see if they have anyone who wants to do training, too, or is this just an estimate based on the number of employees that we have that need the training?
This is our estimate for us, I'd have to go back and ask.
Okay. Just a thought, if other entities needed training, too, while somebody's going to be in town, but
Well, and I guess if that's true, then we wouldn't, the commission wouldn't have to authorize any expenses for the plant board, because they could do so.
But then, well, we could just authorize ours?
Just authorize ours. Not to exceed this, this cost.
Not to exceed this.
And if, if there's more people, maybe the cost goes down, I don't know.
It would go up.
It would go up, I meant for individuals, what I meant. The individual.
This is a lump sum.
Based on that? Based on that?
Based upon the number of employees I have.
Okay.
Okay.
Ah, it was $185 per individual, but they're going to do it for a lump sum of $18 million for the total department, which would be more than 18 people, so.
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. No further questions? Clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, 10.1 is approved. Next item is 10.2 and authorizes the signing of an agreement between XCC Life Insurance Company and the city for life insurance, provides stop loss, loss insurance for the self-insured group health insurance plan. The coverage will limit city health claims exposure to $75,000 for insured with three named exceptions and $3,886,407 annual aggregate deductible. Excuse me. Any questions on, on this item? If not, entertain a motion.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Move back, Commissioner Hayden, second back, Commissioner Roach. Any further discussion? See you in a minute, clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Roach?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes. Any other, any, does anybody have any other new business, I think? Commissioner Roach?
I'd like to put on the December work session, a discussion about emergency management and, and if we could look in particular at staff levels, budgeting, county's contribution, the inter-local agreement, which I don't think has ever been signed. The, I think maybe a, a discussion of the definition contained in the KRS regarding the term emergency, like to look at that. And then I think there's some level of uncertainty as to who, as to where the power is for, in my mind there is, as to where the power is for appointing deputies and who provides ultimate oversight over those deputies. I think I got that one clear, but deputies is a thing that I don't really understand having read it, on who appoints them.
For December. Okay, so we'll have this on the December work session. Okay. Commissioner Bowers?
I had a real easy one. Mr. Sisoff, I told you earlier, I would ask you, if you could have the staff look at a couple of places for signage that I've had, some reports from citizens, they would like, in one situation, a stop sign on Red Drive at the corner of Bluegrass. They say cars fly through there and there have been some requests for a stop sign. If we could just look and see if that's a possibility. And then in the little neighborhood, Fairview and Maple, I know every time I walk that neighborhood and then again recently, there's concern with children are playing in that neighborhood and people are using that street as a cut-through to get from East Main over to Schinkle Lane by avoiding the stoplights. So they're flying around that corner and they're flying up through to get over to Schinkle Lane and there's kids playing, so they had earlier talked to me about getting some kids' at-play signs posted in there and I think one of the responses I got was, children at play tends to give people a false sense of security. But, you know, whether or not that is true, I don't know, but the bottom line is, I think that I've driven through there, there are no, there are no speed limit signs in there. So if the staff could just look at that neighborhood and see what might be done, we even talked about speed bumps, which I hate, but if there's anything to slow down the cut-through traffic, it's, it seems to me that I'm here and it's become like Collins Lane, where I know people fly through the stop signs and, but on Collins Lane, we don't have children playing in the street, but they do in that neighborhood. So if we could just look at that, if there's anything that can be done to make the residents there feel more safe. And then on the Red Drive, if it's possible to put a stop sign there.
We'll take a look. Any other new business? If not, I guess we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move adjournment.
Move back, Commissioner Bowers.
Second.
Second back, Commissioner Haynes. Any discussion, see you in a minute. All those in favor, signature by the same eye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Ayes have it.